Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, September 6, 2017 at 9:00 AM. Mr. Potowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
This morning, I'd asked that we remember all of those in our community, locally and globally, that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way. I also ask that we remember those who've lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. Mrs. Arrington's family has had experienced some loss, and most recently, my grandmother, mother's mother, passed away. So, let's remember all of those families again that have lost loved ones. And actually, as we move forward today, we ask our God and our Creator to give us the wisdom and the best information to make decisions that are best for the citizens of the City of Erie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting August 16, 2017, and bills for payment on September 1st and 8th, 2017, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski.
Okay, repository sales. Do we have any citizens here for repository sales? Do we have any citizens here for repository sales? One last time, do we have any citizens here for repository sales? Hearing none, we'll move on to the citizens to be heard.
We have one sign up, Mary Lee.
Is Mary Lee here?
No, she's not.
Okay. Before we open this up to the general public, I've been asked by council to make a statement that, like we, at last meeting, we had quite a few people here and they acted kind of shocked. But council does not enter into debate during citizens to be heard. We're here to listen to you, and if you want to talk to us, feel free to stay till after the meeting. We all stay around late. So, feel free to talk to us there after the meeting. But we do not get into debate during the citizens to be heard portion. So, upon that, are there any citizens to be heard? Please state your name and address.
Alan Dunphy, 2300 Lake Street, Lake City. I wanted to address the council today to ask that they consider honoring a gentleman by the name of John Boyd. John Boyd is a, was a graduate of Academy High School. He was a veteran of the Second World War and of Vietnam and Korea. I wanted to let the council know, I believe they'll receive a packet or have received a packet of information from, about him and about his accomplishments throughout his life. He is deceased and buried at Arlington National Cemetery. He was a resident of Erie, 514 Lincoln Avenue, here in the city. He grew up here. He was a contemporary and worked with Frank Pettenato as a lifeguard at Prescott Isle. He was a Colonel in the United States Air Force, and he worked for the Pentagon. He designed what's called the Energy Maneuverability Theory, which is, when it was declassified, became the gold standard of air-to-air combat for the world's air forces. He also designed first, or I'm sorry, he also designed third and fourth generation warfare, which is an enormous accomplishment to be in multiple disciplines while serving in the air force. He also was called out of retirement by Dick Cheney to help design the strategy for the first Gulf War. As a resident, his father was employed at Hammer Mill Paper, and he did grow up here. His accomplishments are difficult to go over in a brief period of time. However, they are still yet being disseminated throughout the military, throughout the United States, as we begin to learn about his academic achievements and what they mean to the United States. So, I encourage you to look through that packet and to honor somebody who is a resident of this community and I think reflects very positively on this city and what he's accomplished and what he's done, not only for the United States of America, but for the military as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, Council. Ed Kissel, 2815 Sigsbee. On your agenda today, under new business, you have a resolution to review the recommendations for our waterfront zone. Ironically, on September 4th of 2014, three years ago already, this was an issue along our bayfront, and I'm glad council Dave Brennan brought this up for the council to consider and recommend it to the planning commission for review, so that any developers on our bayfront explicitly know what I hope council has been promoting, that the free public access should be considered on all these developments, so the public can have access along with other folks to our wonderful bayfront. So, I thank you and hope you vote in favor of that.
Thank you, Ed. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Michael Keys, 3612 Reed Street. Today, I'd like to talk about the McBride Vida. A group that I'm working with, Erie CPR, they're having a walk across the bayfront connector next Saturday. I have an invitation for all the council members. But this is truly one of those things where the proverb actually, that if you walk until you walk into a man's shoes, you don't know how he feels. And walking along this dangerous highway, I think you would get the gist of why the citizens are concerned and why we keep bringing up the issue, because it's not a safe road. It would not be the preferred place that any of you would like your kids to have to transgress to get to school or to the neighborhood store. And in the Kimball Plan, the study did not cover using the bridge as a pedestrian or bicycle right-of-way. And I think that that was a defect in the study, and maybe the council or the city could reach back out to see if they can get feedback on that particular usage for the bridge. But we want our kids to have safe neighborhoods and a safe way to travel north and south in that sector. But personally, as I was reading through the Kimball Study, and it goes to 2036, and by 2036, we're going to be having traffic jams in that area. They're calling them pinch points in the study. But why would we ever want or invite traffic jams into our inner city? They don't believe the bridge would relieve enough of it, because they don't believe enough people would use the bridge. But I don't think your statistics can factor in human nature. But if there's a traffic jam over here, the people who don't have to get on that highway will not want to get on that highway. And so, I just think that, you know, going forward, consider all the alternatives that, for keeping our, even within the Boogie Plan, keeping pedestrians and bicycle right-of-ways in our mind and the safety of our kids. I'll leave a copy of the flyer with the clerk.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? One last time, are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. Rose?
Ordinances for final passage, council file number 15601, ordinance number 252017, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $43,588 dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2016 Justice Assistant Grant. By Mr. Winarsky and second by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file bill number 15601, now known as official file ordinance number 252017, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. City council pass official file ordinance number 252017, finally by ye seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file 15602, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $75,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof in the capital improvement fund for use of purchasing DDC HVAC control system for the municipal building. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Brennan, that council file number 15602, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 15602, by ye seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council file number 15603, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $157, 545.52 dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received and providing for the expenditure thereof for the Bureau of Refuge and Recycling. Sponsored by Mrs. Arrington, seconded by Mr. Mersky, the council file ordinance number 15603, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 15603, by ye seven, nay zero, on first reading.
That'll take us into new business.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second. You have a second? Mr. Mersky seconded it. Are there any separations?
Yes. The new business, number one.
Under new business?
Yes, number one.
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda.
Rose, did we pull number two?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, for information, everyone, was pulled by Hammond, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Under new business, number two was pulled. Okay, Rose.
Okay, voting on, moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. Sponsored by Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved by the council of the City of Erie, that city council respectfully request the city planning commission to review existing regulations and proposed amendments to Section 306 conditional uses waterfront districts and 306.10 public access waterfront districts of the City of Erie zoning ordinance and to make recommendations to city council for appropriate amendments. The goal of the proposed amendments is to clarify the existing language, ordinance language, in order to provide clear and concise regulations for future waterfront development and free public access. Discussion?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I put this resolution on the agenda to request a review of the existing waterfront conditional use and public access ordinances in order to clarify the ordinance language, provide more clear and more concise regulation for future waterfront development and free access. The importance of this, importance of this review is further justified by the fact that several members of the zoning hearing board have gone on record during the previous court challenge and also in a recent email to state that the changes need be made to the ordinance to, again, provide further clarification. I'm hoping that the ordinance can, as for review, be revised to be consistent with council's original intentions of the ordinance, which are to ensure free public access to our waterfront and to ensure that any project involving site development at the water's edge receive input through design review commission, planning commission, and public hearing by city council. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I'm very much in support of the effort that is intended with this resolution. And again, the whole thing is just making sure that things are in place and there's no, there's less wiggle room and gray area in relation to development that can be done on our, on our bayfront. I think we experienced that in the last, pretty near past, that depending on who's reading and who's interpretation and who says this is a large enough issue to change, to go before this board, and that sometimes we can word ourselves right out of the intent of what we are writing. And so, I agree with this wholeheartedly, and I think, I almost feel like sometimes Mr. Potowski, when he always references the school board experiences that he has, I feel like I'm turning into that guy. But I was here when we really did a lot of that zoning change with Councilwoman Kuntso, was like kind of spearheading that. And the whole point was to have access, free public access, as well as public input in changes and enhancements and adjustments that would take place on the bayfront. And that needs to come to council, it needs to have community input, and it needs to be marketed, that it's available to have public input in the appropriate way. So, we saw some of that not happening in the recent past. And so, again, I just want to support this for those reasons. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Witherspoon.
I also support this 110%. It's long overdue. I've been involved with it initially, and thanks to Councilman Brennan, who stuck with it and brought it to our attention. And now, we're offering some positive changes for the people, the City of Erie, and those who visit from the county. The word is public access, not just access public, and we have a right to walk in safety at any time on the bay. If it haven't been seconded, I will.
Any other member of council?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mersky.
I just want to make it clear to the community that free public access is the law currently. So, I'm confused, because in the email that we received, the body of the email said we are going to ask the zoning hearing board, or the planning commission, rather, to review it. But then, there was a document attached that had language already written to change the law and change the ordinance. And that is what concerns me, because it seems very agenda-driven. And when we already have an outcome before we study, I'm concerned about that. And the other thing I'm concerned about is that we have RFPs going out right now through the Erie County Convention Center for developers. And I think it sends the wrong message to, that Erie is not business-friendly to developers when we change the rules in the middle of the RFP. And I think we have to be very careful about the message that we're sending to the community. You know, this body with Voodoo Brewery, we tried to, you know, cajole them into not having out courtside or outside seating. The appearance is that this body sometimes is not friendly to business. And so, I just am very concerned that we're putting up more barriers, because the language that was written that I read had more barriers in it to development, not less. And I think that if we're going to, you know, push for development on our bayfront, we should be removing hoops to jump through, not putting more hoops in the way. It sends the wrong message to developers, and I think that the law that we have now provides for free public access, it provides clear rules for what you can and can't build, and it also provides a mechanism for recourse. And we've seen that mechanism for recourse employed recently. So, I think all of the tools that we need are there, they're in place. I think if we're going to review zoning, I think spot zoning isn't the way to go. I think we need to review zoning throughout the city. It's been over a decade since we've done that, 15 years, actually. And so, I think if we're going to do it, let's do it comprehensively. I think to put a roadblock in with develop, right at the time, the timing's just bad with, you just put out an RFP for developers, and then you're going to say, "But," you might not be able to do what you want to do. So, those are my concerns with, with the ordinance. It's not so much the resolution, rather, to study it, it was that there was a document attached that already had language written with an outcome.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think maybe some of the confusion is that we have to be mutually exclusive in, in both of these efforts. One, which is to continue to have clear language, again, in our ordinance around public access, around community input and involvement and the processes. The issues that we've had recently have been process issues. So, it's not that there aren't tools in place, but there's some, again, some wiggle room and gray area, and maybe some miscommunication or misunderstanding on how those rules can be implemented. And so, the question is not, do we have tools? I think we do have some tools and some very effective tools in place. But depending on who's utilizing the tool, they, you know, they can wiggle it how they want. And so, the effort is, again, to, to look at that and give less, I would say, less wiggle room, not in a sense of being overly stringent, but being clear on certain components of the process that have to happen to meet the requirement and, again, the intent of what the, I think, the ordinance is intending to share. So, again, I don't think we have to be, I don't think that being business-friendly and business and developer-friendly means that we are citizen neglecting. I don't think, I think we can do both at the same time. And I think an interesting thing is that we have to do both at the same time, because we have citizens here and we have in-house, in-community needs that have to be met, but also, at the same time, we're reaching out to have business come in. And so, we can't just, okay, keep everything the way it is so that we can make sure that the businesses feel overly welcome. We want them to feel very, very welcome, but we also have other business to do along the way. We have to be done multiple, do multiple things at the same time. The reference to the facility of the business right up the street, I think, was a bit out of context, because the issue was not being business-unfriendly, but is that actually bringing up a question of how we can, which is our major task, is to make sure that what is needed in the city and the resources that the city has is not being exploited. And again, that might be an extreme word, because Voodoo, that particular business wasn't trying to exploit anything. But we have several instances where we have a great resource as the city, whether it be our waterfront and our bayfront, whether it be our streets and sidewalks and access being given to businesses to create revenue for their private business, but the city is not getting any kind of support from that. And the city would be responsible in a lot of ways if something was to happen or responsible, whether it be directly the city or with pseudo-governmental organizations and agencies maintaining those spaces. So, I think, again, my comments are not in any way to be viewed as argumentative, but to be saying that we have to do multiple things at the same time, and we can't do one to the exclusion of the other. And so, again, I don't want to get overly off on, away from what we're voting on. I support what we're voting on. And we always get things with people who have their agenda or maybe some ideas they'd like to see happen, but we are the voting body, and we are, we have decisions to make in relations to how we change the ordinance. It doesn't matter. I mean, you can give me whatever you want me to look at, doesn't mean that I have to vote on it and adopt it. And so, sometimes, we often say, "Give us a solution, don't just give us a problem." So, some, I think that's an instance where someone gave us a solution or some ideas, and we don't have to accept them, but they are there. And they've offered us not just, again, a problem, but maybe some thread and a needle on how to sew the problem up, and we can choose to use that or not. But anyway, I think, my point is that we have to make decisions that are multi-pronged, multifaceted, trying to balance, again, being business-friendly and community-friendly, citizen-friendly and incoming business owner and developer-friendly. And that's not always easy to do. If we were to not change things that we recognize need to be changed in our ordinances, because a business is in the process of potentially, or we're ourselves, putting out an RFP, then we'll never get anything done, one side or the other. We'll never change what needs to be changed, or we'll never be inviting and putting out RFPs for business development to come in and do greater enhancements in our community. So, again, I think we need to work together, figure out how do we balance that, nuance it, navigate it well to meet both needs the best that we can, understanding that both sides, if they're our sides, aren't going to be 100% happy. But we, as a body, we have to do what's best for the most with what we have. So, thank you, Mr. President, for that.
Are there any other members of council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I did not receive the attached document that Mr. Mersky was talking about regarding some possible changes to the ordinance. But what this resolution today is stating to review the existing regulations or the ordinance, what is in place right now, which I have no problem with voting in favor of that at this point. But if, say, future down the road where something comes up where they want to change the ordinance, where it's not going to be as much business-friendly or does not fit into the whole plan down on the bayfront, then that's a whole nother vote, a whole nother issue. But with this resolution here today is clarifying the existing ordinance, which I guarantee you, the developers that are bidding on this right now are aware of the original ordinance that is in place and regulations. But before, we want to be a roadblock for any development down there. There is an ordinance in place that is to be followed. Right now, we're going to review it and move forward from there. But there's no changes brought before us at this time. So, with this resolution, I am for review, but that doesn't mean it's the final stage where we're changing an ordinance and we may have issues down the road. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Brennan.
Yeah, the, just to address the question, there was an attachment to that email. Do you mind much what happened to that? It was in the email. But the, it was put together with input that I received from several groups, of course, on the Lake Erie, and also the, the public record from all the hearings that we had. And some of the quotes from those hearings were, one was from, well, two from the board members, one from Edward Dawson. He indicated that the board reviewed exhausted evidence in making their decision. He said he thinks several key points in the city ordinance is lax specificity, and this regarding the definition of a "but," and he indicated that he would like to see the language of the city code improved. And also, Ms. Selena King, who's here today, also felt that the definition of safety barrier in the city code is unclear. She said that going forward, she'd like to see the city council take more proactive role. And also, Judge Garhurt even noted in his, in one of the documents, that the code does not specify any specific type of safety zone. The term "safety barrier" is not defined in the code. So, there's a lot of items here that I think would help business by providing some basis or some more definition to it, maybe a better definition to it. So, I'm hoping that it makes it clear for businesses to look at this and developers to look at this. So, it's, it's really a framework. So, in the, in the future, you know, any designer can look at this, and so, here's, here's the basic elements, here's the minimums. But you can propose something, have the committees review it, and they could approve it or not. It's not like, here's a design, stick it in your plans, and that's the end of it. The idea is to provide this framework and to hopefully have that public input, have, be able to provide be able to provide options for the developer, they could do what they want to, but they just have a review process to go through. It's not like we're limiting the design that they would allow. So I think the, if that would have happened with the convention center authority with that walkway, you know, there would have been a public hearing in city council and maybe there wouldn't have been any type of lawsuits or anything like that going on. So, who knows? Thank you.
Any other member? Mr. President, I guess just my concern is that in the resolution, we're asking the planning commission to make recommendations, but then Mr. Brennan already made the recommendations. And so what am I voting on? Am I voting on the recommendations? Am I voting on the planning commission making recommendations? That's what I'm confused about is there was a set of recommendations attached to that, is that what we're voting on?
I think the, what's written in the ordinance says, "Review existing regulations and propose amendments." It's reviewing, it's not approving or passing anything. It's a review.
Well, then what was that document that you presented?
It was the public input I received. I just wanted to provide that along with us to support it because this is what I've heard from various groups and, of course, various zoning hearing board members.
Because it took the ordinance and it redlined things and changed things. And so that's what I was, and that's when I texted you in the group text and I said, "What is this?" And so that's what I said, "I'm confused because there were already recommendations put in the document and I didn't know if that was part of this, what's going on." You know, like, I'm not opposed to reviewing the document, I am opposed to what was written as being, what is going to be the law. I think that, you know, if we're going to do this, it should be, we should allow the planning commission to do their job and not cajole them into putting stuff in that necessarily might be what we want, but not what is best for the bayfront. And so I think that, you know, that's where the confusion was because there was already an ordinance written in there and I was confused, was this what we're presenting and saying, "Review this and give us the thumbs up or thumbs down," or are we giving them free rein to change the height variance, to change those types of things too?
I think we're giving them the opportunity to make a review and recommendation to council.
As I see it, Bob, we're voting on both, but neither one is clad in concrete, they're just saying, "These are our suggestions, but feel free to make your, you know, what you think."
Right. Because I'm saying, you know, what if they remove the 200-foot height limit and they say you can build a 10-story building down? You know, what if that's the recommendation, I guess? I don't know how far, like, that wasn't in David's ordinance, but where are we going with this is what I'm concerned about. And what's the, are we limiting their scope just to the sidewalk? Or are we, like, it was, I didn't get those answers.
Any other member? I'd like to say--
Who has the final say-so on this, Mr. President? Did the commission, when they vote on an issue--
Oh, they'll bring--
--it's said and done or it comes back to us?
It comes back to us.
Point of order. Call for the vote.
I'd like to make my comment first.
Go ahead, so you're the boss.
Yeah, just for, I, you know, listening to all this, I made a couple of notes and I don't, Mr. Mersky brings up about the RFP. This ordinance will go into effect when it does, I mean, if they do accept it. And of course, I'm sure there'll be, I don't speak legally, but there'll probably be a grandfather period in there, what's in, already in the hopper. But it's apparent that, as we sat here, time after time, all ordinances are, what do you call, voted on at a period in time, but they evolve, much like the amendments to our constitution. Things change, problems change. And this board, time after time, this council, has heard, like Mr. Jones brought up, about the easement situation, different things, it just constantly, it's an evolving, evolving problem. To me, it comes down to the intent of the law, the waterfront ordinance, was that council would have the final say, but it's apparent by reading the ordinances in prior practice, what seems to be happening is we have an authority or other people that are accountable to no one, making decisions where this body is accountable to the people that elected us, who should be making the decisions. And what I see Mr. Brennan's amendment doing is saying, "Okay, we know there's a hole in this ordinance and they're taking advantage of it." Just like when we found out the hotels were non-taxable and there's a new law. Okay, I get businessmen coming up to me too, wondering, "Is everything they put down there going to be tax exempt?" We don't know the answer to that.
Right.
Yet businessmen are asking me that question, "Why do I pay taxes, you know, yet certain people down there aren't or will they?" And I think this is what this council has to ask. And I think, look, we'll give it to them, in my opinion, we give it to the planning committee, let them look it over, do the suggestions. We can even put a letter in there, "These are suggestions." And then it has, like Mr. Witherspoon said, it has to come back to us for a final vote and we can vote it up or vote it down. But I think to just stay status quo, you know, it's not good because everything that happens on the waterfront, from the littlest detail to the big detail, has an effect on that whole waterfront, you know, and how we perceive, you know, whether a sidewalk or whether, where they plant a tree, you know, once they set things in motion, that horse left the barn, you know. It's, you know, to bring, you know, we want to say, "Look, we're not stopping them from building, we're not putting roadblocks in, we're saying, 'Hey, look, there's a set of things you have to do' and that's, you know, I think that's what Councilman Brennan's trying to do."
Mr. President, so just for clarification, just so I know what I'm voting on, because as written on the agenda, I don't have a problem with it. What I had a problem with is that, the question I have is, are we asking the planning commission to make recommendations on Mr. Brennan's ordinance that he wrote, or are we asking them to just have, make general recommendations and Mr. Brennan's ordinance is a suggestion?
As I look at it, David, feel free to, you know, David submitted some and it says, and to make recommendations for appropriate amendments, and he puts them in their suggestions. That's how I look at it. But David, if you want to--
It says, "Review existing regulations and propose amendments and make recommendations." They could take my proposed amendments and throw them out the door. But those amendment, those, what I propose is based on the input that I've seen--
Okay.
--and the hearings that I've seen.
That's all I needed to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's where, you know--
Thank you.
Okay.
I was just confused and no one was able to clarify it for me till--
No, it's good that we ask questions because it's an important issue. There was a call for a question.
Roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kotowski. This resolution will adopt seven to zero. And that will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, we're gonna go a little bit out of order. Mr. Brennan, you can go first today.
I actually have no report today, so--
Thank you.
I'll make it a quicker meeting. It's actually the first time I've ever said that in my life, but there you go.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to welcome councilwoman back to the D S. She's been ill, hospitalized for three or four days, and my advice to her was, "Don't show up this morning," but here she is. I hope she's feeling a lot better, for sure. Erie Housing Authority is doing a fine job under the direction of Mr. Mike Fraley. Their educational Ellen Carey Golf Tournament was very successful, 144 golfers and quite a bit of money is going to the students that live in public housing, helping them in their parochial school as well as college. They're doing a good job. Mr. Mike is doing an outstanding job. Thank God, the summer league is over, but it's, it was a tough year this year. We had record number of young men and women, 306 young men, 100 young ladies at the East 19th Street Court. We ventured down to the bayfront. We started out with 40, we ended up with 86 down there. We only had one young lady, so we had her play with the guys and she became the most valuable player. You know how the ballplayers do, you make a good move and you, you know, we walked down the court and we tapped you on the butt, "Good move." I thought, "Don't do it. Don't do it, because if they get you back, I can't call a foul on them." So, but she was outstanding. She was outstanding, I'm very proud. The other thing about the volunteers on the Lower East Side, they're more of a family down there. Cousins playing against uncles who's coaching the other team and uncle booing the nephews when he's shooting the foul shot. We didn't do a draft there, we just kind of split them up and made the teams equal. Outstanding. And we're gonna concentrate more next year on the bayfront than we did this year, very successful. And then there, of course, there's Spoons Court Two on Pennsylvania Avenue and 12th, between 12th and 11th. They're on the move, they're doing a lot of things. We had police department play against a team that Coach Shannon Poynter put together and I don't know if, because it was across the street from Victory Christian, but the good Lord sent rain, so everything went out. First time I had a basketball game, the end of the tie. But it was an exciting summer. The city of Erie provided most of the equipment that we needed to make it work. We also had quite a few independent businesses that jumped on board. We had the courts redone and we're moving, it's just a little puzzle. It's a small piece of the puzzle in our community. I have them for five hours, I don't have any issues at either court, they're very appreciative. We're gonna put some more signs, you know, we got 18 barrels, but we got 16 tons of garbage on the outside of the barrel, so I don't know how that works. But we have individual people in the neighborhood that would just freely go and pick and clean up on their own. And so we're making an indentation of health and cleanliness. We're gonna expand the educational part next year, having the district attorney office do a program, maybe half an hour before each game, each age group. Department of Health, we want to pull them in, we want to pull emergent care in. So we're trying to do our part, but the puzzle is a larger part than what we can handle. And we'll just continue to do our thing and we want to thank the people, the city of Erie, the supporters, the volunteers, the administration. And it's ironic that it started with Mayor Savaccio, continued through the Philippi administration, continued through two terms of mayor senate. Hopefully, the next mayor will see the benefit in the program. So, Mr. President, it's just been a good summer, but I'm glad it's over. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Mersky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. One of the things that we've voted on and from the redevelopment authority is the, to enter an agreement with, for the R cap money with the redevelopment authority, and so there is some progress being made on that front in terms of getting state money into the city for redevelopment. And also with the administration, if I could just, with the change in times at the school district, now you have the middle school kids coming earlier and the elementary school kids starting later, the crossing guard situation has become a problem because now you have, instead of like a half-hour window where kids are coming to school, you have an hour window where middle school's coming at 8 o'clock, the elementary kids are coming at 8:45. And I received a couple complaints about 8th and Bayfront and I called down to Sergeant Tuznick and he did say that we're looking for more crossing guards. So to the community, if anyone is looking for work, we need crossing guards, it's part-time, but it's a nice job for somebody who's retired or somebody who's in between work right now. And 8th and Bayfront is the most particular one, but we do have to examine the times because the elementary kids now are coming, and even with the, and I don't know if this is the city or the state, with the speed zone lights, the 15 miles an hour for the school zone, to make sure that the timing's right on those for when the kids are actually coming to school. So if we can look at that, I'd appreciate it. And then just, you know, we had some debate here today and it's healthy debate, I don't want anyone to think like, you know, I'm being an obstructionist or anything. I just know that development in the city of Erie is very, very fragile right now. And while businesses are flocking to Harbor Creek and Summit is booming, we have to do everything we can to nurture and encourage development in the city of Erie. It takes us twice as much work to lure businesses in as it does in some of those communities because they have the luxury of open space and less regulations and so we have to do everything we can to encourage it. I'm not against public access. Public access is the law and it's everything, in fact, the JF property is more public access than when it was a shingle factory and nobody was allowed down there. So we've increased public access through the years and I am in favor of public access and I'm in favor of people using our waterfront, but I'm also in favor of people using our waterfront and having something to do down there and not just having a blank space and making sure that we have businesses down there that make it a healthy community and a healthy waterfront, like we see in so many other cities. You know, the biggest concern is, I was looking online at water fronts and I, some of the best water fronts in the world, we run the risk of over-regulating to the point where we couldn't make those in our city because of the regulations. So we've got to make sure that we balance public access, public amenities, and public development. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
No report, Mr. President.
Ooh. Mr. Winarsky. Two for two?
I don't know about that. I'm always brief, but not that brief, that's good. No committee reports, but I just do want to thank the EMTA for their help this summer between the Eight Grade Tuesdays and the Port Authority, getting the citizens over to the park. Once again, parking is of a necessity over there, so it really does help that the buses get them transported over by the library, over to the park, as well as for the festivals, most notably the Italian Festival and the Polish Festival, where the neighborhoods are smaller and the parking's a lot tougher. They have come to aid to transport them from adjacent parking lots that are in the neighborhood but where the people don't have to walk three, four blocks to get to these festivals. But I do want to thank the EMTA for being a good partner for the city and their citizens to help make accommodations to enjoy these outings. Administration, I want to thank them, the city workers, for once again, a very successful celebration. I did make it down three of the four days and, thank God, we, the weather held out for us majority of the time, but once again, very good responses. I've heard no issues to speak of and I just want to thank, once again, the administration, which, without the city workers, helped and make this all work, as well as the citizens for supporting it, very well attended and great festival we had there. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Arrington.
I just wanted to thank the community centers, all the other organizations who had programs this summer for our kids. You know, the key to keeping our kids out of trouble is keeping it busy and without these different programs going on throughout our community, we can have a lot more chaos. So we really need to continue to support the centers or anybody that's having program for our youth because they need that, you know? And I want to welcome all the kids back to school. You know, I'm praying for a blessed and a good school year without the incidents, so I just wanted to let everybody know who were working with kids this year, this summer rather, and had programs, thank you. And also thank you to EMTA. Every week, we took our kids at the Pocahontas on field trips, so we kept them busy, we kept EMTA busy and we really appreciate them. Thank you very much.
I'll keep my report brief. Bob, I too got some calls about the school busing, I'll get together with you. A lot of confusion and they're calling-- A lot of confusion and they're calling us now, because they can't get through the school board. So, I guess that speaks well of us, but, well, you know, they're taxpayers like everybody else and they have problems and we should... I met with the Secretary of Transportation of the Commonwealth and also the Secretary of the D C D. I'm glad that they're finally including council in some of their meetings. And during that meeting, we talked about improvements to the Bayfront Highway and the State Street interchange there, plus some other updates on various issues involving the downtown area and various highway projects. And I did mention to Mr. Pettit that there's a lot of confusion on East 38th Street about what's going on. And it's sad to admit that I have to tell them, "I don't know what's going on." So, I put a request in to LeAnn Parmeter, and I hope you'll make sure she follows up. Just so council's aware of the time schedule for that project. At first, we heard it was going to be open for school and then we heard, so what was that? Was that public school or was that college? They're both gone now. And while we want to see the project get finished, the general public's asking us what's going on when they see a road being dug up after they put the first coat of pavement down. So, just some update on what's going on, so I think people can understand, we're still dodging puddles on that street and it gets a little wild out there. Met with the airport authority, there was some good news and a combination of both. Looks to be they're going to add another flight out of Detroit, but as far as Philadelphia goes, I think they're still going to be down to, I believe it's one flight now, or two, maybe down to one. The new airline hasn't taken, nothing's positive has happened yet, they're still studying Erie. And there were some issues with private, private transportation, private carriers down there. They're trying to upgrade the facility, so the airport authority's doing a good job. It's just that everybody wants to see more flights and we're promised that the airplanes will get bigger. That's good news, because if you ever had people come in from out of town on holidays, when there's a weather problem or just a general problem trying to get to Erie, the smaller aircraft and the lack of flights makes it a real treat to get here. Oh, I don't read social media, but it was brought to my attention that there were some comments made about our solicitor and the members of council during the last study session, I mean, the last council meeting. And there was a comment made that we're all taking notes and we're not paying attention to the people, we're looking down, we're talking. Well, let me assure you what's happening up here. We are taking notes, because if you sit up here for an hour and a half or any period of time and a citizen mentions something of importance to you, depending on your memory can be a little iffy at times. So, you know, we all take notes, we mark them down, we follow up on those problems and our solicitor does also. So, I don't, you know, at least get it right, what we're doing up here. So, if you want to come up here and watch what I'm doing, put a request in, you can sit behind me and I can assure you I'm not playing any games, but taking relevant notes. So, you know, thank you. But I had to be said, because, I mean, taking pictures of us here while we're listening to you? Come on, grow up. Finally, I'd like to thank, oh, I'd like to welcome Mr. McDonald back. Been a while. And with that, that finishes my report and I'll turn it over to the controller.
I have no report.
Administration?
Well, I told the solicitor that I had no report, but I have to thank city council for 12 years of supporting Celebrate Erie. We wanted to go out with a bang this year and we think we certainly did that. We had great crowds, Kid Zone was fantastic. We had the Erie School District with a table, answering all of questions with all of the changes happening. Two blocks worth of free, family-friendly things for kids to do. Just really thank city council for supporting our event for 12 years. That's all.
Legal department? Motion to adjourn?
City council adjourns at 10:07. Mr. Kotowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.